Maybe you can just hit the gavel a couple of times.
The forty-first plenary meeting of the tenth emergency special session of the general assembly is called to order. The general assembly will resume its consideration of agenda item five entitled Illegal Israeli Actions in Occupied East Jerusalem and the Rest of the Occupied Palestinian Territory. In light of the decision taken by the general assembly earlier today, to suspend the debate on agenda item this afternoon, the assembly shall now proceed to consider draft resolution A/ES ten slash L twenty-five and amendment A/ES ten slash L twenty-six. Before proceeding further, I would like to inform members that the draft resolution and draft amendment have closed for E sponsorship. I now give the floor to the representative of the secretariat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before the president gives the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, I should like to announce additional co-sponsors of both the two L documents. First, on L twenty-six, since the submission of the draft resolution and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the foreign countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES ten slash L twenty-five. Bear with us. Austria, Belgium, Bulgaria. No? Bear with us. Additional sponsors for L twenty-five. Bahrain, L twenty-five additional co-sponsors: Bahrain, Bangladesh, Belize, Prudential State of Bolivia, Botswana, Brunei Darussalam, Comoros, Cuba, Democratic People's Republic of Korea, Djibouti, Egypt, El Salvador, Indonesia, Iraq, Jordan. Those were original sponsors, I'm very sorry. Those were already on the L document. Additional co-sponsors are Azerbaijan, Bahamas, Chad, China, Gambia, Timor-Leste, and Uganda. Again, additional co-sponsors in addition to those on the L document are Azerbaijan, Bahamas, Chad, China, Gambia, Timor-Leste, and Uganda. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor L twenty-five, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. I see none as additional co-sponsors for L twenty-five. Next, on L twenty-six, since the submission of the draft amendment and in addition to the delegation listed on the L document, the foreign countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES ten slash L twenty-six. Austria, Belgium, Bulgaria, Croatia, Cyprus, Czechia, Denmark, Estonia, Finland, Germany, Greece, Italy, Japan, Kenya, Latvia, Lithuania, Luxembourg, Malta, Marshall Islands, Montenegro, Kingdom of the Netherlands, New Zealand, Poland, Portugal, Republic of Moldova, Romania, Slovakia, Slovenia, Sweden, Sweden, Ukraine, United Kingdom, and United States. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor L twenty-six, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. I see Tonga, Spain, North Macedonia, Federated States of Micronesia. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the representative of the secretariat. The assembly will now proceed to the assembly will now proceed to take action on the draft resolution contained in document A/ES ten slash L twenty-five and the amendment thereto contained in A/ES ten L twenty-six. Delegations wishing to make a statement in explanation of vote before the vote on any of the proposals under this item, including the proposed amendment, are invited to do so now in one intervention. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. Accordingly, I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Jordan.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today with a profound sense of duty as I present draft resolution L twenty-five titled Protection of Civilians and Upholding Legal and Humanitarian Obligations on behalf of the Arab group. This resolution is brought forward under the tenth emergency special session agenda item five addressing illegal Israeli actions in occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory. It has garnered co-sponsorship from forty-seven member states of this esteemed general assembly. Mr. President, the situation in Gaza is dire, characterized by immeasurable suffering where the fundamental human rights and the dignity of its people have been violated in blatant disregard of international law. The consequences of indiscriminate violence, the loss of countless innocent lives, and the extensive destruction of civil infrastructure are destined to leave a lasting mark on generations to come. Since the eruption of this cycle of violence and conflict on seventh October, over seven thousand Palestinians, innocent Palestinians, have tragically lost their lives, including women, children, elderly, health workers, and UN staff. The urgent need for an immediate ceasefire to end this prolonged tragedy and create a path towards diplomatic solutions cannot be overstated. It is not merely our responsibility, but a profound moral obligation to champion the cause of peace. In light of these compelling circumstances, as we all are witnessing a ground invasion conducted by Israel as we speak, and the absence of a resolute action by the United Nations Security Council four times so far, our draft resolution pursues a simple yet vital goal, one that aligns with the very purpose for which the United Nations was established: peace and compliance with international law. This resolution addresses the intensifying violence in Gaza Strip, the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. It calls for an immediate enduring and unwavering humanitarian truth, ultimately leading to cessation of hostilities. It demands adherence to international law, especially concerning the safeguarding of civilians, humanitarian personnel, UN staff, and essential facilities. This resolution emphasizes the crucial necessity of unimpeded humanitarian access to lifesaving essentials such as food, water, medical supplies, fuel, and electricity for the civilian population in Gaza. Moreover, it pleads for the immediate unconditional release of captive and underscores the imperative of protection of civilians and humanitarian infrastructure and the disproportionate impact of armed conflict on vulnerable groups encompassing women, children, individuals with disabilities, and elderly. Furthermore, the resolution underscores that the only viable path forward is a two-state solution rooted in pertinent UN resolutions and international law. In a time of crisis and uncertainty, this path offers hope for just and lasting peace. Finally, I would like to remind delegations that Israel is responsible for the atrocities that are being committed now and that will be committed in their ground invasion of Gaza. Do not support any effort to legitimize such atrocities as we are seeing now in a proposal that perpetuates to whitewash such unlawful and horrendous aggression against the Palestinian people in Gaza. In this context, I call for a vote on Canada's amendment L twenty-six. Thank you, President.
I thank the representative of Jordan for his statement, and I now give the floor to the representative of Canada.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We meet here today to take action and to show the people of Gaza and the people of Israel that we see their plight, the devastation they are facing, and the need to find ways to get more urgent help to them given the gravity of their despair and to deal with the causes of that despair. Any life lost is a tragedy. There is no hierarchy of death. Yet the critical reason for how we got here has already been forgotten by so many, as if it never happened. But just two weeks ago, Hamas terrorists killed over fourteen hundred Israelis, not even mentioned in the comments by my friend from Jordan, with their own hands and weapons, and wreaked sheer terror on the people of Israel. The ongoing threats of Hamas, Iran, its proxy Hezbollah, and others continue to hang over the entire region. Since that day, October seventh, over seven thousand Palestinians. And just three days ago, when I spoke to the Security Council, it was over five thousand. So we can see the need for a rapid response from this organization to deal with the humanitarian crisis. Those who have been living under Hamas's tyranny have been killed, and over a million are displaced. This is what has prompted this body, this emergency special session, into action.
We acknowledge the considerable efforts deployed by the drafters to take into account the comments, and we are grateful for those efforts which have certainly made it possible to considerably improve the text. Unfortunately, Canada cannot support the text as it's currently proposed. We cannot act as a general assembly of the United Nations without acknowledging the terrible events of the seventh of October and without condemning the terrorists who are responsible for this. And that is why Canada is presenting an amendment to the resolution presented here with a view to condemning the terrorist attacks carried out by Hamas of the seventh of October and the hostage-taking which continues. If the amendment is not adopted, not only will the Security Council not only would they not have acted following this violence, but this organ will adopt a resolution which doesn't even mention anywhere the organization which is responsible for one of the worst terrorist attacks in history, and we will all have to live with that failure while the tragedy continues to unfold.
The purpose of this amendment is quite straightforward. It is not by any means a whitewash of anybody. Facts are facts. On October seventh, Hamas committed acts of terror by killing and kidnapping innocent men, women, and children. We in this assembly have an obligation to name two things not mentioned in the draft resolution: the organization that bears responsibility for those events and its consequences, and the deliberate cruelty of the murders and the hostage-taking that is still underway. Our amendment does just that, no more and no less. The actions of a terrorist organization are not to be confused with the will of the Palestinian with the will of the Palestinian people. Nothing and no one can justify the terror that Hamas has unleashed. We continue to call for the immediate release of hostages and demand that they and all civilians be treated with compassion and humanity. Forty-one member states have nationals being held hostage. What is undeniably an ongoing war crime has to be brought to an end. We all understand in this chamber that war has rules. We share a common obligation to protect civilians, to respect international humanitarian law, ensure that aid workers are safeguarded in all circumstances. Civilian deaths in Gaza, including of employees of the United Nations itself, are tragically and unacceptably high, and we urge the steps required to deal with the rapidly deteriorating humanitarian situation. Unimpeded access to assistance is essential, which is why we specifically endorse the need for humanitarian pauses. We commend the United States, Egyptian, and Israeli efforts to allow the first deliveries of humanitarian assistance through the Rafa border crossing. This has been a positive first step, but much more is required and much more needs to be done. To date, we've committed $60 million from Canada in humanitarian assistance that will go to trusted UN and Red Cross partners who will help address the immediate needs on the ground. We will continue to ensure that our support helps provide food, water, and other lifesaving assistance to those who need it most. As we look at the region in its entirety, it is crucial that the violence we are witnessing in Israel and Gaza does not spread further to the West Bank or elsewhere. The fragile situation along Israel's northern border with Lebanon is concerning to all of us, and more than ever, regional escalation remains a real threat. It is our hope that neighboring countries are not brought even deeper into this conflict. To be clear, Mr. President, Canada supports the right of Israelis and Palestinians to live side by side in peace and in security. Key steps must be taken to ensure that we take this past and ending this terrorist attack after we have had the courage to name it and ending the power of terrorist organizations in the region has to be one of the steps that we can all agree needs to be taken. This is why I'm urging all of you to support this amendment, which brings balance to the resolution and names what must be named. What we are proposing is factual and it is fair. If our amendment is adopted, it will allow many member states to support the text as a whole, including Canada. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada for his statement, and I now invite Pakistan, the distinguished representative of Pakistan, to take the floor.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the text that has been proposed by the Arab and the Islamic countries in L-25 is a humanitarian text. It seeks three simple things: one, an immediate cessation of hostilities or ceasefire; second, the provision of urgent humanitarian relief to the besieged people of Gaza; and third, a stipulation against the further displacement of the 2 million people in Gaza trapped between Israel's bombs and its tanks. Mr. President, the co-sponsors of L-25 have been circumspect in the language that has been used in document L-25. The document has not condemned Israel by name. And this has been a deliberate act of moderation on the part of the sponsors. Because if one were to see the situation that is on the ground with Israeli bombs that are there for 20 days against the helpless Palestinian people, with 7,000 men, women, and small children, half of them children, killed by Israel in the last 20 days, 17,000 injured, 1.1 million Palestinians displaced. The enormity of the crimes that are being committed by Israel against the Palestinian people are so great and enormous that it is amazing that when my friend from Canada insists on naming the organization Hamas, that he does not feel the need for it to be named has to be named. We believe Israel needs to be named. If you are fair, if you are equitable, if you are just, you will not blame one side and not the other. And if you were to go back to the issue of who started this, we all know who started this. It is the 50 years of Israeli occupation and the murder and killing of Palestinians with impunity that started this. When you push a people into the corner, they will respond. This is what the Secretary General said. It did not happen in a vacuum. And look at the reaction that came from the Israeli representative, insulting the Secretary General, calling for his resignation. They can't face the truth. They can't face justice. They can't face the fact that the crime has originated with the Israelis. The Israeli occupation is the original sin in this case. It is not what happened on the 7th of October. That is a proximate cause. But the real cause is the occupation of Palestine. Mr. President, it was not our purpose to name anybody in this text. My colleague from Canada says, "Well, the hostages, we don't speak of..." The text does speak in balanced terms for the release of all who are held against their will. But not only the Israeli hostages, also the Palestinians. They have the same rights. They are human beings too. And if you only focus on your kids and kin in Israel and forget the Palestinians because they are different, are they people of a lesser god? I think if Canada was fair, if Canada was really equitable, it would agree either to name everybody, both sides who are guilty of having committed crimes, or it would not name either, as we chose in L-25 not to name anybody. But if the Canadian amendment passes, Pakistan will withdraw its co-sponsorship of L-25, and we will submit an amendment to the text of the resolution which will strongly condemn all indiscriminate attacks by Israel, the occupying power, against the Palestinian civilian population. That, I hope we will have the opportunity at the appropriate time to do so. But my appeal to all member states here is not to support the one-sided Canadian amendment, the unequal Canadian amendment, the unfair Canadian amendment. We urge you not to show that you are biased against the Palestinian people who have suffered 50 years of occupation, that you are even-handed, that you will either name both or you will name neither in this draft resolution. Our purpose is to stop the fighting. The fact that we have reports today that the Israelis have gone on the ground into Gaza, which will escalate the fighting. It is all the more reason for this General Assembly to pass a resolution which is unequivocal in calling for a halt to the fighting, to the hostilities, and that is what we must do this afternoon. I thank you, Mr. President.
We have heard the last speaker in the explanation of vote before the vote. As decided this morning, I wish to recall that a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting is required for the adoption of the draft resolution and any amendments thereto. Before proceeding to take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25 in accordance with Rule 90 of the Rules of Procedure, the Assembly shall first take a decision on draft amendment A/ES10/L26 submitted by Canada. We now turn to draft amendment contained in document A/ES10/L26. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment A/ES10/L26, please signify. Those against, abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES10/L26. Will all delegations confirm that the votes on L-26 are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been concluded. Please lock the machine.
Should I read it out?
Yes, but before... So this is short of two-thirds majority, so it's rejection.
It's rejection.
So please read this, and then the last line, "Having failed to obtain a two-thirds majority of members present voting", the last amendment is not adopted.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 88; against, 55; abstentions, 23. Having failed to obtain a two-thirds majority of members present and voting, draft amendment A/ES10/L26 is not adopted. Since draft amendment A/ES10/L26 is not adopted, we shall proceed to take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25 entitled Protection of Civilians and Upholding Legal and Humanitarian Obligations. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution A/ES10/L25, please signify. Those against, abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES10/L25 entitled Protection of Civilians and Upholding Legal and Humanitarian Obligations. Will all delegations, before I lock the machine, will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 120; against, 14; abstentions, 45. Draft resolution A/ES10/L25 is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to 10 minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now call on the distinguished representative of Iceland.
Mr. President, we are convening this emergency special session against the backdrop of another great tragedy for millions of Israelis and Palestinians and a disappointing impasse in the Security Council. Iceland supported the amendment proposed by Canada, which would have added a much-needed context and balance to the resolution. Iceland regrets that the amendment did not pass. Without the inclusion of those essential elements, Iceland decided to abstain on the resolution tabled by Jordan despite supporting many of its key elements, notably on the humanitarian front. It is unfortunate that consensus could not be reached on a resolution to address the grave humanitarian situation and the need for concrete action to protect civilians and facilitate the safe delivery of humanitarian assistance. Mr. President, Iceland joins the calls for humanitarian force to facilitate the safe delivery of humanitarian aid throughout Gaza. Safe and unimpeded humanitarian access must be ensured. Civilians and civilian objects, medical personnel, and humanitarian workers and assets must be protected. We deplore the immense suffering of innocent civilians and the thousands, including women, children, and UN personnel that have been killed. We are alarmed by the impact of mass evacuations of civilians in Gaza. We must prevent further escalation for the sake of Israelis, Palestinians, and the wider region. Across the world, this continuous violence is fuming the flames of hate, antisemitism, Islamophobia, and racism. Mr. President, Iceland is grateful to the UN Secretary-General for his tireless efforts to ensure the urgent delivery of lifesaving humanitarian assistance to the civilian population of Gaza. We echo his calls for humanitarian aid to the civilian population of Gaza so desperately in need of food, water, shelter, and medical care. We welcome the opening of the Rafa Crossing, and we commend the humanitarian personnel working night and day to facilitate the urgent delivery of humanitarian assistance. More aid is needed, and it is needed now; time is running out. Iceland has responded to UN emergency appeals with an additional contribution to UNRWA, our longstanding humanitarian partner and the lead UN agency mandated with supporting Palestine refugees. We urge other donors to step up their support to UNRWA's critical frontline delivery of aid to the people of Gaza. To conclude, Mr. President, we must break out of this vicious cycle of violence and work towards a sustainable political solution. The international parameters for a long-term, sustainable solution to the conflict are clear: a two-state solution based on international law, with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. Even in the midst of crisis, we must not give in to violence and hate. We must not lose hope even when peace seems unrealistic and distant. We must put the peace process back on track; otherwise, we run the risk of perpetuating the cycle of violence and humanitarian conditions deteriorating even further to the detriment of everyone. I thank you, Mr. President.
Before giving the floor to the next speaker, you may wish to ask delegations to remain seated to listen to other speakers. It's been just quite...
Distinguished delegates, can I please prevail upon you to keep your seats so that you can listen to other speakers make their presentations? We are still in the midst of the debate. Thank you for your cooperation. I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Iceland, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Poland to take the podium.
Mr. President, materialism has always been the foundation of Poland's activity at the United Nations, and our actions have been guided by the principles contained in the Charter of the United Nations. Therefore, we fully support all international efforts aimed at restoring peace. Poland follows with great concern the current devastating crisis in the Middle East. We know very well the consequences of war, invasion, and terror which are felt for generations. Now it is critical time; we should make every effort to reach the cessation of hostilities and to return to a diplomatic path of this dispute. Mr. President, Poland decided to abstain on this resolution as we believe that the path to peace requires including several key elements missing in the text. First, the submitted proposal lacks a clear condemnation of Hamas' attack on October 7th this year. Terrorism aiming at the civilian population cannot be tolerated under any circumstances, and this is why Poland condemned the brutal attacks on civilians carried out by Hamas on its very onset. Second, it should be stated clearly that Israel, just as any other state, has the right to defend itself and its citizens in compliance with the international law and international humanitarian law. Third, and lastly, we are also joining all those calling for immediate and unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas. Among them, there is one Polish citizen, a distinguished historian working for Yadwazem Institute. We expect Mr. Alex Danzig to return home safe and sound. Nevertheless, we largely agree with the humanitarian provisions of the presented resolution. For decades, Poland has been involved in humanitarian development and aid projects in the Middle East with particular focus on Palestine and Lebanon. Poland's yearly contribution to UNRWA, which has been decided to supplement with fresh one million Polish złoty, are a clear proof of our wider political commitment to the stabilization of the Middle East. In this context, we were satisfied to see the opening of the Rafa Crossing last week and the first convoys of aid trucks entering Gaza. However, the flow of humanitarian aid into Strip must continue and raise. We strongly believe that the lives of civilians on both sides must be protected in accordance with international law and international humanitarian law. The nearly complete blockade of the Gaza Strip, which hinders the imports of food, water, medicine, and electricity, must end immediately. The strategy of collective punishment that puts civilians at risk is a wrong one. We should make every effort to reach the cessation of hostilities and to return to a diplomatic path of this dispute. We fully believe that within the UN, we as international community should be able to develop a common position on this extremely important issue. Otherwise, escalation and spreading of the conflict may have devastating and long-lasting consequences. In this vein, Poland remains open to constructive cooperation and committed to a negotiated, viable two-state solution built upon internationally agreed parameters, and I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Poland, and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Belgium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Belgium voted for this resolution, but we deeply regret that certain elements that we had promoted and which are fundamental were not included in the final text. The reasons why we voted in favor are nevertheless numerous. One, humanitarian access in Gaza must be guaranteed, and all types of obstacles must be eliminated. Belgium, like the rest of the European Union, supports the establishment of humanitarian corridors and pauses, hoping that this could lead to humanitarian ceasefires in response to the calls from the United Nations. This is the primary reason for our vote. Secondly, our international action is, as you know, based on respect for international law and international humanitarian law. In this particular issue, which is particularly complex and emotional, as in others, as the Secretary-General rightly stated, even wars have rules. We have therefore expressed our support to the general goals of this text while being well aware of what it is lacking. The protection of civilians, all civilians, must be our primary concern, and they must be targeted with increased efforts on our part, even if they remain the primary responsibility of the parties to the conflict. Here, I wish to recall that Belgium does not urge the attempts for a total blockade, nor forced displacement, nor the use of civilians as human shields, whether it be in this context or in any other. Fourthly, we regret nevertheless that this resolution that we consider to be primarily humanitarian in nature did not take into account the following elements: a clear condemnation of the terrorist attacks perpetrated in Israel by Hamas and the Islamic Jihad. Terrorism must be fought in all circumstances. The ES Act could not pass in silence; they should have been condemned explicitly in the Security Council. Since this was not possible, the current resolution could have denounced them to a greater extent. It will be the focus of greater attention on our part now. Belgium also calls for the unconditional release without delay of all hostages. Such an act which runs counter to international humanitarian law could have been dealt with in a more explicit manner, and I commend those who are currently working to free the hundreds of innocents currently detained by these terrorist groups. Belgium recognizes unequivocally the right of Israel to defend itself. This incontestable right, under international law, must be carried out in respect of international humanitarian law, and this should also be included in an explicit manner. In conclusion, I wish to recall that we do not consider that the security of Israel and the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people to be mutually exclusive, rather the opposite. This situation once again shows the absolute necessity of defining a political horizon towards a lasting solution and a viable solution to this conflict, which would guarantee Israel the possibility to live in peace and in security, and that would achieve the right to self-determination for the Palestinians. Therefore, it is necessary to create the right conditions to lead to a negotiated solution. And this is what is the focus of the Peace Day effort, which has the full support of my country, Belgium. Diplomatic efforts must currently focus on de-escalating the tensions so as to avoid further human suffering. Belgium commends and supports all those efforts undertaken to avoid further exacerbation of the situation in the region. This is where the Foreign Minister of Belgium is currently in the Middle East and is multiplying his contacts in the region so that he can hear what is going on there. We are bringing a message of dialogue, dialogue which much move through truth, peace, and respect for international law. I thank you for your attention.
I would like to thank the distinguished representative of Belgium, and I now invite the distinguished representative of France to take the floor.
Monsieur le Président. Mr. President, France voted in favor of the resolution presented by Jordan on behalf of the ERG Group because nothing could justify the suffering of civilians. All of the victims warrant our compassion, and all of the lives are equally worthwhile. There's no hierarchy. We have to work collectively to set up humanitarian truce which could lead eventually to a ceasefire because the situation in Gaza is catastrophic. We must guarantee safe, rapid, and unhindered humanitarian access, but also lasting in the Gaza Strip. And that's why President Emmanuel Macron announced today an appeal to form a humanitarian coalition for Gaza, and France sent a new aircraft carrying humanitarian aid for the population of Gaza. France nonetheless regrets that many essential elements are missing in the text. First of all, a condemnation of the terrorist attack carried out by Hamas, as well as other terrorist groups against Israel. Our Assembly must also call for the release of hostages. Many countries here have already been victims of that kind of blind terrorism; France is among them. I would also recall that Hamas doesn't represent at all its population, quite the opposite. It is a catastrophe for the aspirations of Palestinians, a state that will serve them. Israel has the right to defend itself and the duty to do so in respect of international law, and in particular respecting international humanitarian law, and therefore to protect the civilian population. France underscores that the adoption of this text cannot replace the efforts of the Security Council and the decisions that the Security Council must now adopt. Mr. President, we have the duty to prevent a worsening of the situation throughout the entire region. France is committed to preventing an extension of this conflict. And lastly, we must act in order to recreate the conditions for a political solution which could meet the legitimate aspirations of Palestinians and Israelis to live in peace. The conditions of this lasting peace are well-known; they are indispensable guarantees brought to Israel for its security and a state for the Palestinians. The only viable solution is a two-state solution, and that is why France voted in favor of the draft resolutions presented by Brazil and by the United States at the Security Council. And that is why it hopes that the Security Council will reach as soon as possible a just decision which is based in our common principles. Thank you very much.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of France, and now invite the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands to take the floor.
Mr. President, I thank you for convening this emergency special session and for recognizing that these are extraordinarily trying times. Mr. President, we are shocked by the number of innocent lives lost and the suffering of many more people. Every civilian life is valuable, and each civilian casualty is one too many. Our thoughts are with all the victims, Israeli and Palestinian and their families. None of us can even imagine the scale of the humanitarian challenge in Gaza. There's an urgent need to secure safe and unhindered humanitarian access. Food, water, and fuel, including for hospital generators, must be allowed in immediately, as well as medicines for the many that desperately need them. Humanitarian pauses in the fighting are urgently needed to make this possible and to save lives. And funding is needed, as also follows from the UN's urgent appeal for more international assistance. The Kingdom of the Netherlands has already stopped its humanitarian response. We have immediately committed an additional twenty-five million euros for urgent humanitarian relief, eight million euros of which is for UNRWA and comes on top of our annual contribution of nineteen million euro. Mr. President, we would also like to pay tribute to UN staff and all humanitarian workers that continue to do their work under extremely difficult circumstances, and offer condolences for the staff that lost their lives while doing so. We all need to work to prevent this conflict spreading even further, and we call for restraint by all parties. This is not a time to put fuel on the fire. We're also worried about the situation in the occupied West Bank, where settler violence is aggravating an already tense situation. The Palestinian Authority is working to maintain stability and deserves our full support. Mr. President, we are grateful to Jordan for their efforts to introduce a resolution that gives voice to so many of the grave concerns shared by us all. We welcome the strong condemnation of all acts of violence against Palestinian and Israeli civilians, the call for immediate humanitarian access, the demands for provision of essential goods and services to civilians throughout the Gaza Strip, as well as the demand that all parties comply with international humanitarian law and international human rights law. These messages have our full and strong support. Still, we have decided to abstain on the resolution because important elements are, in our view, missing from the text. First, following the terrorist attack by Hamas, we support Israel's right to defend itself, a right that needs to be exercised in line with the principles of proportionality and necessity. And second, the immediate release of all hostages is an utmost priority and is insufficiently reflected in the resolution. Also, we prefer to look at existing UN mechanisms first rather than call for the creation of a new mechanism to ensure protection of the civilian population. to ensure protection of the civilian population. Mister President, the mere thought of this situation spiraling further out of control is frightening. We must urgently address humanitarian needs. We must urgently break the cycle of violence. And we cannot give up on peace and on the two-state solution. We all know that a common perspective on sustainable peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians alike is the only way forward. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands. And I now invite the distinguished representative of Bulgaria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Bulgaria is gravely concerned with the rapidly deteriorating humanitarian situation in Gaza and calls for continued rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need through all necessary measures, including humanitarian corridors and pauses for humanitarian needs. We underline the importance of ensuring the protection of all civilians at all time in line with international humanitarian law and deplore all loss of life, of civilian life. However, we must also recognize that the heinous and indiscriminate terrorist attacks of Hamas across Israel, which we condemn in the strongest possible terms, brought unimaginable suffering of civilians. The use of civilians as human shields by Hamas is a deplorable atrocity. We call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. There is no justification for terror and Israel has the inherent right to defend itself in accordance with international law and international humanitarian law. Unfortunately, the resolution that was just adopted falls short of recognizing that. And for those reasons, Bulgaria abstained on it. The priority now is to prevent further escalation of the conflict. The international community should invest more efforts in creating a real political horizon for a solution through intensive outreach and clear messages. We remain committed to a lasting and sustainable peace based on a two-state solution and the relevant resolutions of the UN Security Council. Must be made clear that there cannot be a military solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. The only way towards just and sustainable peace is returning to the peace process and taking it forward. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria for her statement. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Norway.
Norway voted in favor of the resolution just adopted. We commend the Arab group for its efforts to act in good faith and search for a compromise on some of the most sensitive issues. We would like to highlight two important elements that we wanted to have included in the resolution. First, Norway voted in favor of the amendment proposal introduced by Canada. We regret that the amendment was not adopted as part of the resolution. Norway has unequivocally and strongly condemned the terror attacks by Hamas in Israel on seven October. We have also condemned the taking of hostages and we demand their immediate and unconditional release. Second, we would like to reiterate that Israel has a right to defend itself against armed attacks by Hamas. We emphasize in this regard that self-defense measures must be necessary and proportionate. Despite these shortcomings, Norway decided to vote in favor of the resolution in its entirety. This decision has been made in light of the gravity of the situation on the ground, in particular regarding the humanitarian catastrophe we see evolving in Gaza, as well as the importance of advancing a joint international message at this critical juncture. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Norway and now invite the distinguished representative of Israel to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Today is a day that will go down in infamy. We have all witnessed that the UN no longer holds even one ounce of legitimacy or relevance. This organization was founded in the wake of the Holocaust for the purpose of preventing atrocities. Yet, the spectacle we just saw proves beyond a doubt that the UN is committed sadly, tragically, not to preventing but ensuring further atrocities. Israel just endured the largest massacre of Jews since the Holocaust. And according to a majority of the so-called family of nations, Israel has no right to defend itself. Entire families and communities have been exterminated by genocidal Hamas jihadists whose sole goal is to annihilate the Jewish state. There is no reasoning with evil like this. There are no talks or discussions to be held. We saw exactly what they dream of doing to every Israeli and Jew. And we will not sit idly by to let them rearm and commit such atrocities again. We won't, just as every single other member state in this room wouldn't. Israel has the right to defend itself. And the realization of this right is to ensure that such atrocities are never repeated. The only way, the only way to ensure this is the eradication of Hamas's terror capabilities, the only way. Yet this resolution does not even name Hamas, as if this war started on its own, not once. Even when discussing our hostages, the drafters could not even bring themselves to name the Hamas terrorists responsible for this blatant war crime, not even once. It is the duty of this body to call out murderous terrorists by name, not hide them behind empty words. Why are you defending murderers? Why are you defending terrorists that deliberately beheaded children and abducted baby, babies? What is going on here? This must make each of you ask yourselves what the true aim was, was when this resolution was submitted. Was it to bring about a solution? Or was it to tie, tie Israel's hands from defending itself? Distinguished representatives, Israel's goal is to eradicate Hamas's capabilities for the sole purpose of preventing future atrocities. We all know that if given the chance, Hamas and Hezbollah would commit the October seventh massacre again and again and again, until there is not a single Israeli left to murder or a single citizen to terrorize and drive away from Israel. And the only way to destroy Hamas is to root them out of their tunnels and their subterranean city of terror. Hamas has embedded itself deep within and under the Gazan civilian population. Just today, Israel intelligence unequivocally proving that, proving that Hamas's main operating base is located inside and underneath, underneath Shifa Hospital in Gaza, home to thousands of patients and medical staff. The people of Gaza are being exploited as human shields for terrorists. Why, why are you not holding Hamas accountable? Seventeen years of Hamas's indiscriminate rocket fire on our civilians from within populated areas is not enough for you to comprehend this? Yet this dangerous resolution demands that Israel call for Gazans to return, return to this active war zone. Is the goal here to further endanger human lives? This ridiculous resolution has the audacity to call for a truce. The goal of this resolution's truce is that Israel should cease to defend itself to Hamas so Hamas can light us on fire. The drafters of this terrible resolution have shown that, according to them, the most reliable source for accurate information is an ISIS-like terror group. Israel is closely monitoring the humanitarian situation in Gaza. And we know that there is no humanitarian crisis in accordance with international humanitarian law. Trusting the reports coming out of Gaza is exactly like trusting reports from ISIS. Does the international community trust information provided by ISIS? Does it trust numbers provided by Boko Haram? Of course not. So why is Hamas, a savage terror group, no different than ISIS or Boko Haram, trusted? How can you choose to believe such distortions? Every single Gazan ministry is run by Hamas. It is all affront for Hamas. Every official statistic is the word of genocidal terrorists. For example, the fact that UN officials and some of you are still parroting Hamas's lies about what happened at the El-Ahli Hospital is a true disgrace. It was proven with absolute certainty that it was a Palestinian Islamic Jihad rocket that hit the hospital parking lot and that the number of casualties is far lower than Hamas's reports. Yet you continue to echo these lies. Shame on you, shame on you. The truth holds zero importance in this body, zero. Today, the majority of the international community has shown that it prefers to support the defense of Nazi terrorists rather than support the law-abiding state of Israel to defend its civilians. Anyone who is truly interested in preventing violence shouldn't vote for resolutions protecting terrorists. And whoever truly wants to prevent more violence should be calling on Hamas to lay down their arms, turn themselves in, and return all hostages. If this were to happen, the war would end immediately, immediately. This is a dark day for the UN and for mankind. Mister President, Israel will continue to defend itself. We will defend our future, our very existence, by reading the words of Hamas's evil so that it can never threaten anyone else again. Israel will use every mean at our disposal to accomplish this mission. Israel will do what must be done to eradicate Hamas's capabilities and bring the hostages home. And we will bring them home. Thank you, Mister President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Israel for his statement. And now invite the distinguished representative of Ghana, of Surrey, India, to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. In a world where differences and disputes should be resolved by dialogue, this august body should be deeply concerned at recourse to violence. That too, when it happens on a scale and intensity that is an affront to basic human values. Violence as a means to achieve political objectives, objectives damages indiscriminately and does not pave the way for any durable solutions. The terror attacks in Israel on seventh October were shocking and deserve condemnation. Our thoughts are also with those taken hostages. We call for their immediate and unconditional release. Terrorism is a malignancy and knows no borders, nationality, or race. The world should not buy into any justification of terror acts. Let us keep aside differences, unite, and adopt a zero-tolerance approach to terrorism. Mister President, casualties in the ongoing conflict in Gaza are a telling, serious, and continuing concern. Civilians, especially women and children, are paying with their lives. This humanitarian crisis needs to be addressed. We welcome the international community's de-escalation efforts and delivery of humanitarian assistance to the people of Gaza. India too has contributed to this effort. Mister President, India is deeply concerned at the deteriorating security situation and astounding loss of civilian lives in the ongoing conflict. The escalation of hostilities in the region will only exacerbate the humanitarian crisis. It is necessary for all parties to display the utmost responsibility. Mister President, India has always supported a negotiated two-state solution to the Israel-Palestine issue, leading to the establishment of a sovereign, independent, and viable state of Palestine living within secure and recognized borders, side by side in peace with Israel. For this, we urge the parties to de-escalate, eschew violence, and work towards creating conditions for an early resumption of direct peace negotiations. We hope that the deliberations of this assembly will sell a clear message against terror and violence and expand prospects for diplomacy and dialogue while addressing the humanitarian crisis that confronts us. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of India for her statement. And now invite the distinguished representative of Ghana to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Ghana is gravely concerned by the situation in the Middle East, triggered in the latest instance by the Medros outrage caused by Hamas on seventh October twenty twenty-three in southern Israel, including continuing to hold as hostages those abducted and the impact of the response of Israel, which has created a humanitarian nightmare in Gaza. We understand the moral dilemma Hamas has created for Israel and the Palestinian people. But Hamas is not the Palestinian people. And we appreciate the recognition by Israel that its actions must be guided by international law and the responsibility to protect civilians. We have a responsibility as an international community to help end the heartbreaking tragedies that have brought tears, hate, revenge, and a cycle of despair to those caught up in the violence visited on Israel and Palestine. That is why Ghana has worked with other members of the Security Council, including Brazil as president of the month, to find a consensual resolution in the council that responds to the pain and fear of Israelis and the safety, security, and well-being of Palestinian civilians. That is also why we think that out of this tragedy, we must find the fierce agency to support the two parties, Israel and the Palestinian Authority, to resume and conclude a peace agreement so that the two nations, Israel and Palestine, will live side by side within secure and recognized borders. We voted for the draft resolution submitted by the Arab group not because it met the comprehensive set of elements necessary for a balanced text. We did so because we cannot turn away from the unfolding humanitarian disaster in the Gaza Strip. We cannot ignore the real threat of a regional war involving many actors inside and outside the immediate theater of conflict. And we cannot squander the impetus within this organ to seriously push for the resumption of negotiations on the two-state solution. We are pleased that we had the opportunity to vote on the amendments condemning Hamas and calling for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages held by that group. Those who arm groups whose actions endanger the lives and statehood of Palestine must reconsider if that support is indeed in the interest of the people of Palestine. We call on all, including Israel, to take action to restore the authority and legitimacy of the Palestinian Authority. We are convinced that until the Israeli-Palestine peace treaty is signed, the goodwill of the Palestinian people is the best guarantee for true security. We call on Israel as a gesture of goodwill to declare voluntary truce to enable needed humanitarian services to be provided to the people of Gaza and to give space to genuine steps that address its legitimate security concerns, including the immediate and unconditional release of the hostages and a durable peace. We equally call on all those with influence over Hamas to encourage them to commit to the peace negotiations and an end to the campaign of terror. I thank you for your attention.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Ghana for her statement. And now invite the distinguished representative of Algeria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Algeria voted in favor of this resolution because we are convinced of the importance of uniting our efforts on the international level to achieve our common goals and to carry out the necessary measures so as to end the suffering of our brothers and sisters in the occupied Palestinian territories. In particular, due to the recent aggression that has been carried out over the last few weeks by the occupying power. This aggression, which continues to increase, to expand, and the losses of life are something that we must acknowledge, the tragic situation in the Gaza Strip. We must We must first state that we disassociate ourselves from any term in this resolution which aims to place the responsibility for this massacre on the Palestinian people. The occupying power is the only responsible for this carnage and for these violations of international law. Secondly, my country dissociates itself from any language that would give any type of legitimacy to this aggression against the Gaza Strip. We once again condemn the massacres that were perpetrated against the Palestinian people, and we call on the international community to unite, to end this bloodbath, and to provide the necessary protection to the Palestinian people. Thirdly, we deplore the suppression of the language referring to ceasefires. From a political nor moral point of view, can we oppose a ceasefire? Ceasefires are not a choice but an absolute necessity so as to end this ethnic cleansing that the Palestinian people are facing today and due to the current humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip. Fourthly, we are not pleased that there are not enough references to accountability. We call for the Israeli power to be held responsible before the appropriate authorities. We must bolster the Security Council's responsibilities to maintain international peace and security on behalf of all UN member states in accordance with Article 24 of the UN Charter. The Security Council cannot continue to be silent when women and girls are being killed every day in the Palestinian, occupied Palestinian territories. In conclusion, we wish to reiterate our support to our brother people of Palestine in its fight for its legitimate fight, for its rights to establish an independent state with East Jerusalem as its capital. We call on the international community to guarantee the rights of the Palestinian people because this is the only way to ensure peace and security in the Middle East. Thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Algeria, and now invite Switzerland to take the floor.
President, on the 7th of October, Hamas, Hamas carried out unjustified and shocking terrorist attacks against the civilian Israeli population. Switzerland condemned these attacks with the strongest, in the strongest terms, in the very earliest hours. We supported the resolution that was submitted by Jordan to this assembly. Nevertheless, the accountability of the Hamas terrorists is also important for us. This is why we also supported Canada's amendment. We regret that the unjustified and shocking terrorist attacks by Hamas and a call for an immediate freeing of the hostages was not included. We call for an immediate, lasting, and sustained humanitarian pause which would lead to a cessation of hostilities. This resolution is essential. We must ensure that the rapid and unfettered access is given to humanitarian aid for the region because the humanitarian situation is catastrophic, in particular for the millions of displaced, million people who are displaced. Today, faced with the degradation of the situation in occupied Palestinian territories, including East Jerusalem, this is crucial. We also believe that the resolution expresses the deep commitment of many UN member states to international humanitarian law, international law and human rights. We reiterate that the international humanitarian law takes into account both humanitarian regulations and the rules of combat which must be respected, including distinction, precaution, and proportionality when carrying out hostilities. Switzerland is committed to a unified action by the Security Council and will continue to do so. Finally, we must not lose sight of the fact that the only way to establish peace and security is the two-state solution, two democratic states, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace within these safe and recognized borders as this assembly has called for for decades. Thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland, and now call upon the distinguished representative of Czechia to take the floor.
Mr. President, Hamas's terror has plunged Israel and Palestinian territories into a new spiral of violence in which civilians, but to protect every civilian life lies at the very core of them. All civilians must be protected at all times in line with international humanitarian law. Mr. President, Czechia has condemned, in the strongest possible terms, the appalling terrorist attacks in which, in just one day, on the 7th of October, Hamas and other terrorist groups slaughtered over 1,400 men, women, and children. We have all seen the horrific accounts of these barbaric crimes. There's just no excuse, no justification for these atrocities. Over 200 people abducted and held hostage by Hamas must be released immediately and without any preconditions. We are unequivocal in our support for Israel's right to defend itself and its citizens against this terror and to protect its territory in line with international law. Mr. President, the humanitarian situation in Gaza has reached a critical point. The population is in urgent need of food, water, and medicine. We welcome the opening of the Rafa border crossing and the initial entry of essential aid. We support the calls to step up the delivery of the urgent humanitarian assistance while ensuring it is not abused by terrorists. The risk of spread of the conflict further to the region is imminent. An escalation of the conflict puts at risk the positive dynamics that the region has been working on. We commend the tireless diplomatic efforts to de-escalate the situation and to prevent the Hamas-Israel conflict to spiral into a regional war. To that end, actions that incite violence and escalate the conflict as well as any support to the terrorist groups such as Hamas and the Palestinian Islamic Jihad have to be rejected. Mr. President, the resolution this General Assembly has just adopted contains many points that we support as an attempt to address this complex situation. However, the resolution fails to condemn the terrorist attacks by Hamas on the 7th of October. There's no call for the unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas. The resolution fails to recognize Israel's right to defend itself and its citizens against terrorism. Last but not least, it doesn't provide assurances that the delivery of the urgent humanitarian assistance is not abused by Hamas and other terrorists. If we are not clear about the need to stop terrorism, we are not making progress towards the desired peace in the Middle East. For these reasons, Czechia decided to vote against the resolution. Mr. President, despite the current burst of anger and division, we believe that the majority of Israelis and Palestinians prefer the path of peace, not war and terror. Czechia is firmly committed to a two-state solution which remains the only vital perspective to ensure Israel's security and to fulfill the Palestinian desire for their own statehood. Both Israelis and Palestinians deserve to live in peace, security, and dignity. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Czechia, and now invite the distinguished representative of Peru to take the floor.
Señor presidente. President, Peru voted in favor of the draft resolution presented by Jordan and also for the amendment presented by Canada, unfortunately rejected since we were not able to achieve within the Security Council the necessary consensus to offer a solution to a conflict which increasingly claims more and more human lives. It is therefore up to the General Assembly to have the responsibility of directing recommendations for the adoption of collective measures within the framework of the resolution of pro-peace union. The text that we adopted contains fundamental and necessary elements for an immediate truce which would lead to a cessation of hostilities, the release of hostages, the protection of the population, and the quest for a just and lasting solution which would allow both states, Palestine and Israel, to live in peace within secure borders, mutually agreed and internationally recognized in accordance with the international law and relevant United Nations resolutions. I must reaffirm that Peru categorically condemns any terrorist actor such as those perpetrated by Hamas against Israel on the 7th of October. At the same time, Peru considers that it is a moral and legal imperative to respect international law, in particular international humanitarian law, in order to guarantee the protection of civilians everywhere without distinction based on creed or nationality. And this position of principle is one that has, that will continue to guide our action within the United Nations. Thank you very much.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Peru, and now invite the distinguished representative of Germany to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today was a difficult day for the General Assembly. I thank Jordan for its work and take the opportunity to explain our vote. On 7th of October, Israel fell victim to an unprecedented terrorist attack carried out by Hamas. Many civilians have been killed, injured, or kidnapped. For almost three weeks now, Hamas has continued launching rockets against civilian targets in Israel. You can hear the cry in Israel where families mourn their loved ones, killed, maimed, tortured, brutally abducted by Hamas terrorists. For Germany, Israel's security is non-negotiable. Hamas must unconditionally and immediately release all hostages, stop its indiscriminate rocket attacks, and refrain from using civilians as human shields. Like any other state in the world, Israel has the right to defend itself against terrorism within the framework of international law. Mr. President, addressing the plight of Palestinians in Norway contradicts this clear and unwavering stance. We also hear the cry of parents in Gaza mourning and fearing for the lives of their children. The humanitarian situation in Gaza is getting direer day by day. Germany calls for continued, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need through all necessary measures, including humanitarian corridors and pauses for humanitarian needs. Mr. President, we believe that the draft resolution tabled by Jordan for the Arab Group rightly underlines the pressing humanitarian needs of civilians in Gaza and calls for humanitarian access. On the other hand, in our view, the text has major flaws. It falls short of explicitly condemning the terrorist attacks by Hamas and calling out Hamas's responsibility for killing civilians, taking hostages, and indiscriminately firing rockets against civilian targets. We therefore thank Canada for tabling an amendment that clearly names Hamas's responsibility and suggests more unequivocal language. Germany has therefore supported the Canadian amendment and regrets that it did not get the necessary majority. Germany abstained on the resolution before us. Mr. President, in the UN, we speak the language of international law, of humanity, of peaceful coexistence. This is what unites us. The rules of the UN Charter and international humanitarian law should guide our work towards a meaningful peace process, allowing both Israelis and Palestinians to live side by side in peace and security in two independent states. We must all step up our efforts to this end. I thank you.
I would like to thank the distinguished representative of Germany, and now invite the distinguished representative of Singapore to take the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Singapore voted in favor of this resolution after very careful consideration. We deeply regret that this resolution has two glaring and significant omissions. First, it makes no mention of Hamas's role in perpetrating the massive and coordinated terror attacks which led to the brutal killing of 1,400 Israelis and others and the abduction of more than 200 hostages. These are acts of terror that we condemn unequivocally, and the abhorrent deeds of Hamas cannot be justified by any rationale whatsoever. We reiterate our call for the immediate, unconditional, and safe release of all civilians taken hostage. Secondly, this resolution does not acknowledge Israel's legitimate right to defend its citizens and territory in compliance with international law. As with every country, Israel has a right to defend itself from heinous terrorist attacks, to protect its people from senseless violence, and to keep its territory secure. Mr. President, nevertheless, Singapore supported this resolution because we have always been a consistent advocate and defender of international law, the UN Charter, and the rules-based multilateral system. This resolution reaffirms all parties' obligation to respect and uphold international law, including international humanitarian law. It expresses strong support for the efforts by the Secretary-General of the United Nations and for his calls for the immediate and unrestricted access of humanitarian aid and to respond to the most basic needs of the Palestinian civilian population amidst the unfolding humanitarian crisis in the Gaza Strip. It demands that all parties immediately and fully comply with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law. And these obligations have been spelled out in many UN Security Council resolutions. All innocent civilian lives must be protected. I thank you for your attention.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Singapore, and now invite the distinguished representative of the Philippines to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Philippines notes with grave concern the recent escalation of hostilities in the Middle East. We condemn the killings, terrorist attacks, and other acts of violence by Hamas that took place in Israel on the 7th of October 2023, and in this regard, acknowledge the right of Israel to self-defense in accordance with the UN Charter. We mourn the loss of innocent lives and extend our sympathies to all the affected civilians in Israel and the Palestinian territories. We deeply regret the violation of international humanitarian law which has imperiled the safety of civilian populations. In light of the alarming state of civilian casualties, we call on all parties to respect international humanitarian law. We express concern at the massive destruction of health and medical facilities that further increases unnecessary human suffering. The ongoing conflict deeply concerns us with its broad and profound impact on countless innocent civilians, including Filipino nationals and their families. Joining the call of the international community, the Philippines strongly urges the swift release of all hostages. We call for the end of the taking and detainment of individuals, particularly women and children. We reiterate our plea to the international community to come together and provide essential humanitarian aid and support to the affected. Most importantly, we urge all concerned to immediately put in place urgent solutions that would prevent the conflict from further escalating, spreading, and protracting. The Philippines supports the efforts of the United Nations to deliver urgent humanitarian assistance and essential supplies to Palestinian civilians caught in the midst of the conflict in the Gaza Strip. We commend UNRWA, UNOCHA, and other related U.N. agencies for their efforts and sacrifice amidst these challenging times. The Philippines lends its full support to calls for ensuring the safety of civilians seeking refuge in UNRWA premises across Gaza. We welcome the opening of a humanitarian corridor with Egypt, as it is important that the U.N. humanitarian system be supported and is enabled to respond to the scale of the needs of the affected populations in a predictable and sustainable manner. We are also hopeful for a solution to be reached in the soonest possible time in order for the Rafa Crossing to start receiving foreign nationals, including our Filipinos still in Gaza. We also continue to support U.N. peacekeeping missions in the region. We believe that the multilateral approach is crucial in addressing the crisis and preventing further escalation. The Philippines urges the Security Council to endorse and support coordinated efforts with U.N. entities for the safe evacuation and protection of migrants in conflict zones. We earnestly appeal to all parties involved to cooperate in safeguarding their security. With approximately 30,000 Filipino nationals in Israel and a farther 130 in Gaza, their safety and well-being remain paramount to us. Reaffirming our position, the Philippines firmly supports a two-state solution consistently aligned with past international agreements and relevant U.N. resolutions. Both Israelis and Palestinians deserve a future where their rights, aspirations, and security are recognized and upheld. This enduring Israeli-Palestinian conflict remains a pivotal determinant for the peace and stability of the region. A lasting resolution can only be achieved through comprehensive dialogues and negotiations anchored firmly in international law. The Philippines ardently urges all parties to elevate dialogue as the primary tool for a peaceful and lasting resolution. Mr. President, following the inability of the Security Council to act on many resolutions on the crisis brought to its chamber, it is now incumbent upon the General Assembly to take action, do the utmost to bridge the divides, and champion the path to peace. The resolution, ES-10/L/25, as adopted today, includes many elements which the Philippines supports. Notably, it condemns all acts of violence against both Israeli and Palestinian civilians. It calls for respect for international humanitarian law, access for humanitarian assistance to address the large-scale needs in Gaza, and immediate and unconditional release of innocent civilians being held captive. It also reaffirms our longstanding support for a two-state solution with a safe and independent Palestine and a secure Israel living in peace. Overall, it expresses the grave concern of the international community over the situation, which the Philippines genuinely shares. We condole with all victims and their families and pray for a peaceful resolution of this conflict. However, as we would condemn all terrorist attacks, the resolution does not mention nor condemn the terrorist attack of seven October by Hamas, leading to the death of innocent civilians, including women and children, as well as some Filipinos. Because of this attack, we recognize Israel's right to self-defense as provided for under Article 51 of the U.N. Charter reflected in the resolution. Therefore, despite commendable efforts of the cost sponsors to improve the original text, for these reasons, my delegation abstained on the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Philippines. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Republic of Korea voted in favor of the amendment put forward by Canada and then abstained on the resolution proposed by Jordan, especially because the Canadian amendment was not adopted. We believe that the language condemning Hamas and calling on an immediate and unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas are essential elements that should be included in the resolution. Let us be reminded that the rapidly deteriorating situation in Israel and Gaza commenced with the brutal terrorist attacks by Hamas. The Republic of Korea condemns in the strongest possible terms these unjustifiable terrorist attacks. We believe that all states have the right and duty to protect themselves and their citizens in compliance with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law. Mr. President, we have already witnessed over 8,000 fatalities on both sides, most of whom are civilians. The death toll is rapidly increasing. Even at this very moment, innocent civilians are losing their lives. Civilians should not, should not be a target. Taking this opportunity, I'd also like to convey my deepest condolences to the families of the 53 U.N. humanitarian workers who have been killed in Gaza since the beginning of the fighting on the seventh of October. Irrespective of nationality, gender, age, ethnicity, and or faith, all civilians must be protected. It is extremely painful to bear witness to more and more civilians, especially women and children, suffering immensely because of this conflict. All parties to conflict must abide by the rules under international humanitarian law, including the principle of distinction. In addition, the rapid, unimpeded, and sustained passage of humanitarian aid must be allowed. We urge the establishment of pragmatic measures, including humanitarian pause and humanitarian corridor. Time is of the essence, as we stand on the edge of the precipice of a humanitarian catastrophe. We urge the relevant parties on the ground to continue all diplomatic efforts to facilitate rapid, safe, and unimpeded delivery of humanitarian assistance for innocent civilians. Mr. President, enmity among states and widespread hatred among people, these are what extremist groups in the region desire. We cannot and must not allow this. Our common humanity simply must prevail. My delegation would like to stress that this situation must not spill over to other parts of the region. Such spillover benefits no one. Thus, all major players in the region should continue to exert their redoubled diplomatic efforts to de-escalate this conflict. Mr. President, protecting civilians and preventing spillover must serve as our guiding priorities at this fragile moment. However, in addition, we all know that the issue of Israel and Palestine is not something that started on the seventh of October. It has been going on for decades. That is why it is crucial to establish a durable peace solution to end these repeated atrocities and break the cycle of violence. The Republic of Korea believes that sustainable, lasting peace in this region can only be achieved through sincere negotiations based on the two-state solution with security and dignity for all. The current catastrophic situation also reminds us in the most poignant way of the urgent need for sincere dialogue to discuss, contemplate, and hammer out every, every aspect related to this extremely complicated issue with a long-term goal in mind. We strongly believe that even during this bloody and inflamed juncture, all diplomatic channels among relevant countries and parties should actively continue to operate behind the scenes. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ireland, speaking on behalf of a group of countries.
Thank you, President. I have the honor to speak on behalf of the following states that have voted in favor of this resolution: Belgium, Luxembourg, Slovenia, Spain, and my own country, Ireland. We have supported this resolution as it addresses a step that must be implemented with the utmost urgency in order to protect civilian lives and increase the provision of humanitarian aid. At the same time, we emphasize that this resolution does not comprehensively reflect our position. In particular, we wish to reiterate our condemnation in the strongest possible terms of the brutal terrorist attacks by Hamas that took place in Israel starting on the seventh of October 2023. There is never any justification for terrorist attacks against civilians in any circumstances. We strongly condemn the taking of hostages and demand their immediate and unconditional release. We regret, therefore, that the amendment tabled by Canada failed to be adopted. We strongly emphasize Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law, including international humanitarian law. We fully support the demand in the resolution that all parties comply with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law and international human rights law. We additionally emphasize prohibitions under international humanitarian law of the taking of hostages and of the use of civilians as human shields, and the requirement to avoid locating military objectives within or near densely populated areas. These are serious violations of the rule of law which put civilians at unconscionable risk. We fully support calls for humanitarian pauses and humanitarian corridors. We underline the urgent need to secure sufficient and unhindered provision of essential goods and services to civilians throughout the Gaza Strip. We underline the importance of allowing full, rapid, safe, and unhindered access for all humanitarian organizations. We commend UNRWA and other U.N. organizations and humanitarian actors for their selfless work in support of the people of Gaza and across the Middle East, and we offer our condolences to those who have lost their lives. It remains of utmost importance to restore a political horizon. The resolution we have just adopted makes it clear. We reaffirm that a just and lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved by peaceful means based on the relevant United Nations resolutions and in accordance with international law and on the basis of the two-state solution. We support the attempts, including through the Peace Day effort aimed at reviving a political process on the basis of the two-state solution that meets Israeli and Palestinian security needs and Palestinian aspirations for statehood and sovereignty. We urge all partners to redouble efforts to foster consensus and promote meaningful engagement to this end, and we regret that the U.N. Security Council has not been able to pronounce itself on the situation. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ireland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic.
Shukran.
I thank you, Mr. President. At times like these, yes, as this meeting is happening, we are receiving news that Israel has indeed launched a barbaric round offensive against Gaza. And this, of course, will leave behind large numbers of civilian casualties that are unimaginable to us. Israel even cut off communications and internet in Gaza, hoping it would be able to cover up for its barbaric crimes against the sisterly Palestinian people. How will some Western countries with the United States at the lead, how will they, after giving us migraines with their calls for human rights, how will they justify this crime? This barbaric attack can in no way be justified by what these countries describe falsely and unjustifiably Israel's right to self-defense, Mr. President. The world has grown sick and tired of the hypocrisy and lies of some Western states today, and in another dark page in the Book of Israeli Crimes, we see the continuation of the bloody Israeli attack on Gaza for the 20th day straight. The extreme and the level of Israeli massacres has reached a level that's unimaginable. They have killed 7,000 civilians, most of them women and children. Not even rocks were spared. The Baptist Hospital was bombed, so was a church, as well as residential areas, journalists, doctors, engineers, students, and even United Nations staff. Nothing has been spared in Gaza from Israel's barbarism. The other side of the ISIS terrorist coin in a source of shame to some Western states with the United States in the lead, the United States that has offered them protection and impunity and given them a carte blanche for, so that Israeli fascists can kill the Palestinian people, preventing the Security Council from upholding this responsibility to put an end to this aggression and to put an end to the war crimes, the crimes against humanity that Israel is perpetrating. Mr. President, our delegation voted in favor of the draft resolution that we just voted on at the General Assembly because it primarily aims to stop the barbaric Israeli war machine. It calls for an immediate halt of this aggression and to delivery of humanitarian aid, rejecting the forced eviction of Palestinians. However, my delegation would like to express its reservation over some of the language mentioned in it, and that might be construed as equalizing the Israeli aggressor and the occupied Palestinian people between the murderer and the victim, between the killer and those being killed. In closing, we would like to renew, on behalf of Syria, our full support for the sisterly Palestinian people and the legitimate right and struggle that was guaranteed by international law and the Palestinian people's right to establish an independent state with Jerusalem as its capital. I ask that this statement be registered in the official record of this meeting. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of El Salvador.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. El Salvador would like to welcome the adoption of the resolution protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations, which we consider to be a concrete and tangible result of this emergency special session of the United Nations General Assembly. My country believes that the text recently adopted by this assembly is an urgent response and a balanced one, which is placed at the very core of this organization, and that is the protection of all civilians as well as the urgent provision of humanitarian assistance. President, El Salvador condemned and will continue to condemn all terrorist acts, whatever motivation is and wherever it takes place and by whomever it is undertaken. We ask that we stop indiscriminate attacks as well as aggression against all civilians. We ask that we bring an end to human suffering and also to widespread destruction. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of El Salvador. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tunisia decided to abstain in the vote over the draft resolution because we believe that the dangerous and unprecedented trip as a result of the continued Israeli barbaric onslaught on the Palestinian people and the closures and the prevention... and the closures and the prevention of all forms of basic life from reaching millions of Palestinians requires a much higher threshold and a clearer position. And despite the fact that this draft resolution does call for facilitating the delivery of humanitarian aid and preventing the eviction of Palestinians, however, it did not clearly and strongly condemn the crimes of war and the crimes of genocide that are being perpetrated by the occupying powers. Moreover, it does not call for holding accountable the occupier for its crimes. It did not clearly stipulate and call for an immediate halt to the aggression, and it also put the victim and the murderer on an equal footing. Therefore, we have continued our efforts to offer amendments. However, those amendments were only focused on giving the occupying powers more free rein in perpetrating their crimes. Therefore, we called for voting on, we were called to vote on a draft resolution that will only make things worse and will deepen the suffering of the Palestinians. And after the, therefore, we decided to abstain from voting on the resolution. And this is to uphold Tunisia's principled position, which refuses that the aggressor and the aggressed be treated equally and which stresses that there must be a clear condemnation of the aggression of the occupation against the Palestinian people. These are principled positions in our policy, and we do not allow for them to be dismissed in a resolution being issued in such difficult circumstances. We will continue our firm and principled support for the Palestinian people and their legitimate rights and for the establishment of the Palestinian state on their territories. We hope that United Nations resolutions that have exceeded 1,000 are respected and implemented to put an end to the aggression and on the Palestinian people and their suffering and to put an end to the occupation. And so that things must be called as they are because shelling hospitals and killing children and women and harming millions of innocent civilians and targeting houses of worship and houses of residence cannot be used as self-defense. Rather, this is a war crime, while the right to self-determination and the right to resisting occupation and rejecting discrimination, racial discrimination, are now considered terrorism. We call the international community, the Security Council, General Assembly, to shoulder their responsibilities and put an end to all of these mistaken practices and have answers. The Palestinian people must be allowed to enjoy the rights that will continue to exist, and they must also enjoy the protection that they deserve. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Tunisia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
Thank you, President. First, Australia expresses appreciation for Jordan's leadership and sincere efforts in bringing forward Resolution L-25. We agree with the central proposition that the humanitarian situation in Gaza is dire and human suffering is widespread and unacceptable. Australia again calls for humanitarian pauses in hostilities so that food, water, medicine, and other essential assistance can reach people in desperate need and so that civilians can get to safety. However, we abstained with disappointment because we believe the resolution as drafted was incomplete. The resolution did not recognize that terror group Hamas is a perpetrator of the 7th October attack, and Australia again explicitly calls for the immediate and unconditional release of hostages. Moreover, the United Nations Charter guarantees national sovereignty. We believe the General Assembly can affirm Israel's right to exist without denying longstanding and legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people, including to statehood aspirations which Australia supports. We can affirm Israel's right to defend itself while also saying the way it does so matters. It matters for innocent civilians who should not pay for horrors perpetrated by Hamas, and it matters for Israel's ongoing security, which would face grave threats if conflict were to spill over across the region. Aspirations for peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians will recede even further if today's generations are motivated by grief and resentment resulting from this crisis. This Assembly of nations has no lesser duty than to seek to solve the insoluble and transform despair into hope. And despite disagreement on this resolution, efforts behind the scenes make clear that most member states are acting in good faith and want to chart a path out of this crisis towards a political process. That political process must end in a just and enduring peace in the form of a two-state solution where Israelis and Palestinians can live securely and prosperously within internationally recognized borders. That two-state solution must be the new reality that overcomes entrenched ideologies. President, achieving that reality calls for us to see each other's humanity. It requires all states and all sides to respect the right of others to exist, and it will require leadership, understanding, and courage. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Australia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sri Lanka.
Mr. President, thank you for giving me the floor. My delegation, Mr. President, voted in favor of the Resolution L-25 submitted by Jordan on behalf of the Arab group. Mr. President, the paramount need of the hour is the cessation of hostilities, the release of hostages, and enable the provision of humanitarian aid to those in dire need. The essence of the resolution presented by Jordan captures these needs adequately. It also captures the need to respect international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Furthermore, the resolution reaffirms that a just and lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved by peaceful means based on the relevant United Nations resolutions in accordance with international law and founded upon the two-state solution. This is a position that Sri Lanka has consistently maintained. Mr. President, Sri Lanka condemns terrorism in all its forms and manifestations. That includes the terrorist attacks that took place on the 7th of October on the civilian population in Israel. The Jordanian resolution, however, takes cognizance of the 7th of October attack and the increase in violence since then and condemns all acts of violence against Palestinian and Israeli civilians, including all acts of terror and indiscriminate attacks, as well as all the acts of provocation, incitement, and destruction. Accordingly, my delegation desisted from supporting the Resolution L-26, the amendment submitted by Canada, on the basis that the pith and substance of the Canadian amendment had been substantially captured in the text of the Jordanian resolution in the preamble paragraphs and particularly operative paragraph seven, which calls for the immediate and unconditional release of all civilians who have been illegally held captive and demands their safety, well-being, and human treatment in compliance with international law. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sri Lanka. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I wish to begin by congratulating all those members of the United Nations with the adoption of such an important and extremely necessary in these current escalating conditions, resolution. This is not the victory of a national position. This is a position of common sense and justice and humanism. This is a clear reflection of the enormous concerns about the peaceful citizens of Israel and Gaza, something that joins us all together. This resolution is less than what we could and must do for them. Unfortunately, due to the position of Western delegations, the UN Security Council was unable to take any decision. In the General Assembly, the voice of all common sense members of the international community and Arab states was victorious, prevailed. Now, both states must listen. First and foremost, this comes, is about an immediate ceasefire, which must end the violence. Two, information which is coming in on the start of ground operations in Gaza. It is unfortunate to note that our Western partners continue to remain silent on this issue and try to only see one side of this issue. Moreover, this approach is now being forced upon all member states. They believe that this does not respond to the tasks placed before this organization to ensure peace and security. We clearly discussed, condemned both the terrorist acts and the deaths of Israelis and other citizens in Israel, as well as the indiscriminate bombing of Gaza and the victims there. The draft resolution submitted to the General Assembly by our Jordani friends was the last opportunity, and the Canadian amendment made it clearly biased. It painted one side white. The outcome of the votes showed once again that the responsibility of the international community is against the backdrop of the tragedy taking place in Gaza and the Middle East. It is time not to put forward any types of hypocritical interests. It's necessary to send a single signal, unified signal, to end violence and move and to come back to peaceful negotiations in appropriate UN fora and an UN-approved platform based on international legal basis. The outcome must be the creation of a sovereign Palestinian state within the 1967 borders with its capital in West-East Jerusalem, living side by side in peace and security with Israel. This is more, this more than anything else will ensure safety amongst Middle East states, including Israel, and it will ensure peace in the region. Today's crisis is a tragedy, but it's a clear confirmation of the need to carry out these long, long since adopted Security Council and General Assembly resolutions and decisions. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Argentina.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Argentina voted in favor of the resolution. My country believes it's a priority to prevent the worsening of the clashes in Israel and Palestine and its potential expansion throughout the region. At the same time, Argentina condemns terrorism in all of its forms and manifestations and considers that terrorist acts are unacceptable, have no justification, and must be deplored by the international community as a whole. In this framework, I would like to reiterate emphatically and unequivocally, as my government did on the 7th of October, Argentina's firm condemnation of the terrorist attacks perpetrated by Hamas against Israel. And that is why we voted in favor of the draft amendment proposed by Canada to incorporate these concepts in the resolution that we have just adopted, and we regret the fact that it did not enjoy the necessary support. At the same time, without backing down on our position, we decided to accompany the resolution, even with these and other shortcomings, giving a priority to the United Nations to promote all efforts so that the humanitarian crisis in the Gaza Strip does not worsen and for humanitarian assistance to reach those who require it. It's crucial to have full respect for international law, international human rights law, and international humanitarian law. And also, it's crucial that the civilian population be protected regardless of their nationality. Hamas must release hostages immediately and unconditionally. And while we recognize the right to self-defense within the framework of respect for international law, we must also step up all of our calls directed to achieving a cessation of hostilities. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Argentina. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Iraq.
Shukran Jazil, in Sederis.
Thank you, Mr. President. At a time when my delegation expressed its regret, given the fact that the Council did not take on its responsibility to bring an end to the military aggression carried out by the Israeli occupying force, and also given the failure of the Council in the last three weeks, the failure to adopt a resolution which would put an end to the suffering of the Palestinian people, which forced them to resort to the General Assembly. However, the international community did not bear in mind the difficulty of the situation which the Palestinian population is suffering from because of the Israeli occupation, and we must this encourage Israel to carry out a land invasion, defying the UN resolutions. Now, given the fact that my country is a member of two Arab groups and the Islamic group, we joined the consensus for this resolution. And despite the fact that there are many things that we do not agree with that we expressed, we express this opinion in the Council and in the Assembly, our position to support the Palestinian people as to their right to create their own state with East Jerusalem as its capital, we would like to modify our vote concerning the draft Resolution L-25. Our vote in favor of the resolution, our vote in favor of the resolution because there was a technical problem at the time of the vote. My country would like to point out its objection to a certain point in the draft resolution, which is opposed to our national law, and I hope that you're going to rectify that within the verbatim notes of this meeting. Thank you very much.
I think the, I think the distinguished representative of Iraq. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Slovakia.
Mr. President, Slovakia reiterates our condemnation in strongest possible terms of Hamas for its brutal and indiscriminate terrorist attack across Israel. The use of civilians as human shields by Hamas is a particularly deplorable atrocity. We also emphasize Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law. The fundamental principles of conduct and of hostilities in IHL are proportionality, distinction, and precaution. As recalled by the UN a few days ago, war has rules, starting with the fundamental principle of respecting and protecting civilians. All civilians should be protected at all times. We call on Hamas to immediately release all hostages without any precondition. We also want to express our gravest concern for the deteriorating humanitarian situation in Gaza. We know the situation is at breaking point and that we need to act urgently in order to avoid a human catastrophe. We call for continued, rapid, safe, and unimpeded humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need. We recognize and agree with crucial humanitarian elements in the resolution. However, there are aspects of the highest importance of current escalations which are missing, and their reiteration is of utmost necessity. Some of these are condemnation of indiscriminate terrorist attacks perpetrated against Israel on 7th of October, confirmation and reiteration of Israel's right to self-defense, or call on immediate release of all hostages. These are just a few elements missing from the text which Slovakia, together with other EU member states strive to include to paint the full picture of current situation. Unfortunate non-consideration of these crucial points prevented Slovakia from supporting the resolution. Nevertheless, Slovakia remains committed to a lasting and sustainable peace based on the two-state solution. And the relevant resolutions of the Security Council through invigorated efforts in the Middle East peace process. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Slovakia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Mr. President, at the outset, my delegation would like to once again strongly condemn the ongoing military attacks and new rounds of invasion into the Gaza Strip against Palestinian civilians by the Israeli regime. Mr. President, the Islamic Republic of Iran firmly believes that support to the cause of Palestine and Palestinian people must continue until they would be able to realize their fundamental rights. In particular, the right to self-determination and establishment of an independent state of Palestine with Al-Qudsya Sharif as its capital. Historical experiences and recent developments demonstrated that Palestinians have no choice but to continue their resistance against occupation, aggression, and blatant violations of their rights. As we have stated before, we are of the view that the return of all Palestinian refugees to their homeland and holding a referendum for self-determination are the most effective and durable solution to the Palestinian question. Through that referendum, the Palestinian Muslims, Jews, and Christians will be able to choose their own political system and enjoy their rights fairly and equally. Mr. President, having stated our principled position today, my delegation voted in favor of the draft resolution L25 submitted to this emergency special session. And considers it a demonstration of the strong support of the international community for the cause of Palestine. In particular, the realization of the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. Today's vote, both on draft resolution and the biased and politically motivated amendment proposed by Canada is important and shows strong international support to Palestinians and their right to self-determination. It also put an end to fabricated narratives which tries to question the legitimacy of struggle by Palestinian people. Including their armed struggle toward fulfilling these goals. Meanwhile, my delegation would like to reiterate the Palestinian people's inherent right to self-defense in the face of the Israeli regime's continued brutality and hostility against them. The right to self-defense, as recognized by international law and the United Nations Charter, extends to all Palestinians, including resistance movements such as Hamas in their struggle against Israeli occupation and military aggression. Depriving Palestinians of this inherent right is unacceptable as long as occupation and military aggression persists. Mr. President, as I have the floor, I would like to react to the references made in the statement of Canada to the Islamic Republic of Iran and its role in the region. Regrettably, the representative of Canada tried to whitewash Israeli aggression by shamelessly pointing fingers at Iran. Indeed, Canada persists to stay in the wrong side of history by taking sides with the darkness and by viciously supporting the military occupying regime of Israel that is brutally massacring innocent people right now. The level of hypocrisy and double standard is disgusting. Canada and United States are complicit in the crimes of Israel and they must be held to account before history. The actions taken by the certain Western countries, including provision of direct financial, intelligence, and military support to the Israeli regime are clear violation of the United Nations Charter and international legal obligations of the United States and as a result, hold it internationally responsible for criminal acts by the Israeli regime. Just to remind for record that the war crimes perpetrated by Canadian soldiers against Muslim people, especially in Afghanistan, without taking care of hierarchy, they will be taken responsible sooner or later. Mr. President, Islamic Republic of Iran, while fully adhering to its international legal obligations, firmly supports and will continue to support the legitimate struggle of the Palestinian nation for the full realization of its inalienable right to self-determination. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
Today's outcome is an important example of the UN General Assembly discharging our collective responsibility to respond to questions of international peace and security. We voted in support of the resolution after careful consideration. However, we are deeply disappointed that the resolution failed to identify Hamas as a terrorist entity and condemn its barbaric terror attacks on Israel on 7th of October. As I said this morning, we were appalled by their brutality, their targeting of civilians, and the taking of hostages. These are clear violations of international law. Further, the resolution would have benefited from a call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. And a reference to Israel's right to defend itself in full compliance with international law, including in respect of actions taken in Gaza. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of New Zealand. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Kenya.
Mr. President, we voted in favor of the Gaza resolution and appreciate Jordan's consultative approach. The edits made to the text yesterday acknowledging the 7th October terrorist attacks and the hostages taken by Hamas and reaffirming the two-state solution met our minimum expectations. Our favorable vote aimed to address the emergency humanitarian needs of Palestinians in Gaza. However, the resolution did not go far enough in being clear about the terrorist attacks by Hamas that have launched us on this disastrous course. For that reason, we co-sponsored and voted in favor of the Canada amendment for its explicit condemnation of Hamas terrorism and hostage-taking. With the world watching, once again, the General Assembly has taken action while the Security Council struggles to address threats to international peace and security. Each veto that contradicts the objective realities on the ground underscores the urgent need for Security Council reform. Without significant reform, the credibility and legitimacy of the council as viewed by the global populace will continue to diminish. Mr. President, at the start of this debate, we listened closely to the representatives of Israel and Palestine. We were dismayed by their lack of empathy for each other's innocent civilian casualties. This entrenched partiality, this failure to recognize the shared humanity on both sides is a fundamental obstacle to resolving this protracted conflict. On the 7th of October, Hamas terrorists infiltrated 22 Israeli locations using land, sea, and air routes, launching thousands of rockets at civilian areas. They killed over 1,400 people, injured almost 5,000, and took 200 hostages. Our deepest condolences go out to the affected families and communities in Israel. Almost every speech from this podium references international humanitarian law and the Geneva Convention. While agreeing on the importance of universal adherence, it is crucial to emphasize that international and natural law fundamentally protect the unequivocal right to self-defense. This is particularly pertinent in light of Hamas's actions on the 7th of October, which mirror its original 1988 Charter's objective of eradicating Israel and its Jewish population. The attack suggests that even the supposedly moderated 2017 Charter revision, which maintained that, and I quote, resisting the occupation with all means and methods is a legitimate right, close quote, still harbors intentions to destroy Israel and its Jewish people. The hate-fueled 7th October attack is abominable and its underlying genocidal intent is fundamentally inhumane. It is vital for factions in Palestine, the region, and the international community to unequivocally reject such heinous strategies. Today, Kenya condemns Hamas for their attack and demands the immediate release of all hostages and the cessation of its use of civilians as human shields. Mindful of multiple Security Council resolutions, Kenya calls on all member states to intensify their efforts to suppress the financing of groups that employ terrorism. Like Israel after the 7th of October, Kenya knows the bitter aftermath of terrorist attacks only too well. We have endured the psychological torture of hearing the perpetrators attempt to justify the unjustifiable and to blame the victims who are our children, parents, and siblings. We have experienced the searing anger and yearning for justice against those who intentionally harm our loved ones. We reject terrorism as a legitimate form of political resistance. We recognize the need to name and shame those who use terror to promote any cause. Mr. President, this many decades later, we are still recovering from the wounds of colonial rule and the deep scars of the slave trade. We will never forget the decades we willingly endured immense suffering, including massacres and even concentration camps in our unyielding pursuit of independence and sovereignty. We can therefore relate to the raw feelings of anger and pain being felt by the people of Palestine for the lack of progress in negotiations to achieve the two-state solution. We also pay heed to the immense suffering of innocent Palestinian civilians. The lives of Palestinian people are as precious as those of all other peoples. Thousands of Palestinian civilians, including hundreds of children, have been killed by Israel's air barrage against Hamas. Critical civilian infrastructure is being destroyed. UN agencies on the ground are warning of a calamitous humanitarian situation in Gaza. We offer our deepest condolences to the affected families and all of Gaza and the West Bank. We also extend our condolences to the families and colleagues of humanitarian workers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, including the 38 UN staff members who have perished recently in Gaza. Kenya thanks the United Nations, the Secretary General in particular, Egypt, Jordan, and other parties for the opening of the Rafa border crossing. But it is inadequate. It is imperative that Israel and neighboring states unite to guarantee unhindered humanitarian aid and delivery of vital services at the scale needed. We call for Israel's military to take every precaution to protect civilians and critical civilian infrastructure from its military strikes. We strongly condemn Hamas's tactic of hiding weapons in civilian areas. Using human shields is abhorrent and illegal. These actions violate the fundamental values and laws upheld by the UN, highlighting the urgent need for a global resolution to the Palestinian question. Mr. President, history teaches us that the response of states to terrorism, particularly when they make use of illegal means, can unintentionally lead us to an era of escalated radicalization and violence. Much has been said about the 7th October attacks being Israel's 9/11. All of us can empathize with the desire for vengeance after the cruelties of terrorism have been visited on the innocent. Yet we must be wise enough to remember the terribly costly lessons learned from the worldwide responses to the al-Qaeda attacks here in New York two decades ago. We therefore strongly urge Israel to adhere to international humanitarian law and the laws of war today so that it can maintain the legitimate opportunity to negotiate peace tomorrow. The desire of the Palestinian people for their own land can never be extinguished. However, as long as Palestinians grow up in rage because their lives, dignity, and talents are distorted by punishing occupation, their just cause will struggle to be led by a legitimate resistance that rejects terrorism. The attacks of 7th October and the aftermath in Gaza signal a pivotal moment. The status quo is no more. Two paths lie ahead: an escalating conflict with global repercussions or a renewed international commitment to a two-state solution and peaceful coexistence based on a credible, nonpartisan, and impartial process. This is the moment for courageous, inspired leadership that can keep its eye on the prospect for peace. Such leadership must desist from using the grave situation in Gaza to advance short-term geostrategic advantage or mobilize domestic constituencies. For to do so constitutes a betrayal to the Palestinian cause and an insult to Israeli and Palestinian lives lost. States that ardently support and sponsor both factions of this monumental conflict bear the responsibility to employ their influence and leverage in guiding the parties back to the negotiating table. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Kenya. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Colombia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As was expressed by the Vice Minister of Multilateral Affairs of Colombia yesterday, Colombia reaffirms its historic support for a peaceful solution, a definitive and comprehensive solution to the Palestinian question. Based on the solution of two states who live side by side within safe borders in accordance with what is established in the relevant resolutions of this General Assembly and of the Security Council. Colombia voted in favor of this resolution, joining the broad majority that agreed and reaffirming the call for a ceasefire and for the unlimited respect for international humanitarian law and the protection of life in accordance with the resolution which we have just adopted. Violence only produces more violence and more loss of life, leaving in its wake an unfortunate and nefarious legacy for future generations. I reiterate the appeal made by President Gustavo Petro to hold an international peace conference with a view to achieving a definitive solution to this conflict. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Colombia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. President. South Africa voted yes in favor of Resolution L25 on protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations. Like many here in this hall today, we are deeply disturbed by the harrowing images of death, destruction, and turmoil which have engulfed Gaza as a result of Israeli bombardment of civilians, essential infrastructure, of civilians, essential infrastructure, and places of worship. As the international community, we must be united in calling for an immediate, comprehensive ceasefire. Humanitarian corridors should be open immediately so that and other basic services can reach all those in need. We call on parties, all parties, to exercise restraint and for all states to desist from failing this increasingly unjust war, including by supplying weapons to the parties. South Africa urges the United Nations to impose an arms embargo on all parties in all, given the nature of the death and destruction we are witnessing every day. We also strongly support the Secretary-General's call for international humanitarian law to be upheld, civilians to be protected, and for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire, as well as upholding human dignity. Mr. President, we express condolences to the people of Palestine and Israel for the loss of lives during the past three weeks. There's an added obligation on Israel as an occupying power over the people and territory it occupies in terms of the Geneva Conventions, including the prohibition against collective punishment. This is the international system based on respect for the rule of international law and international humanitarian law that many in this assembly have been arguing for. The targeting of civilians in armed conflicts, including the use of starvation, destruction of civilian infrastructure, and all other atrocities perpetuated by the occupying power, including calling for the wiping out of a group of people, clearly constitute war crimes, crimes against humanity, and genocide. These are clear violations of international human rights, international humanitarian law, and the Geneva Conventions and their protocols. These violations must be investigated by the relevant international courts at our disposal. Mr. President, we cannot ignore the fact that continued occupation of Palestine by Israel brings hatred, suffering, and pain. We must not proclaim the importance of international law and the importance of the U.N. Charter in some situations and not in others, as if the rule of law only applies to a select few. For international law to be credible, it should be uniformly applied and not selective. It is therefore unfortunate that the conflict has again showed the inadequacy of our institutions, in particular the U.N. Security Council, which has a mandate derived from the U.N. Charter for the maintenance of international peace and security. A body of such stature is found desperately wanting, as it cannot even call for a humanitarian ceasefire to allow for much-needed humanitarian supplies to go to those that need it most. We are deeply concerned by the events in the Security Council in recent days, which have demonstrated the aggravated politicization of a dire humanitarian situation during a time of need and desperation. This should be another wake-up call to all of us to work urgently for the reform of this body. South Africa wishes to join others who have affirmed that the ultimate solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is the establishment of two states, Palestine and Israel, living side by side in peace. The Palestinian state should be created along the nineteen sixty-seven borders, with East Jerusalem as its capital. We have the responsibility, as the international community, to make every effort towards creating opportunities for comprehensive dialogue led and owned by Palestinians and Israelis themselves. Peace between Palestine and Israel cannot be delayed any longer. We would like to conclude by correcting an incorrect interpretation of the laws of war in situations of occupation. Occupation law is part of the laws of armed conflict. A state cannot simultaneously exercise control over territory it occupies and militarily attack that territory on the claim that it is foreign and poses an exogenous national security threat. The occupying power can use tools applicable to the rule of law, including policing powers to deal with criminal actions. The right to defend itself has been used erroneously and deliberately to justify extradicial killings and collective punishment, with many countries enabling and justifying these unlawful acts. At the same time, we condemn the attacks by Hamas and other Palestinian groups on Israeli civilians. While oppressed and occupied people have the right to resist, including armed resistance, this right has to be exercised within limits imposed by the laws of war. The actions of Hamas since seven October this year included war crimes and must be investigated, just as the heinous war crimes, crimes against humanity and genocide perpetrated by the Israeli forces, must be investigated. In all these cases, the most responsible must be held accountable, and we call on the International Criminal Court to immediately indicate its plans to investigate these latest breeches of international crimes in Israel and the occupied Palestinian territories. Mr. President, while we are referencing the relevant laws of war provisions, we believe that war is a sketch. As the organization created to save succeeding generations from this sketch of war, we should change the global culture of violence to a culture where peace is valued, where peaceful societies are nurtured, and peace builders are venerated instead of warmongers and their related institutions and actors. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Africa. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, let me first thank the PGA Francis for chairing this emergency special session. I would like to begin by joining colleagues who have thanked the United Nations for their tireless work to de-escalate the conflict and help the affected ground. It is extremely important that in the face of the stalemate in the Security Council, the main body of the United Nations could serve as a multilateral forum of discussion on the most pressing issue of today, namely the conflict that has been inflaming Middle East since the horrific terrorist attacks against Israel that were launched by Hamas on October the seventh. Italy is and will be firmly standing in solidarity with Israel. For us, Israeli security is in no way negotiable. This is what Italian government at the highest level, from our Prime Minister to our Foreign Minister, has been stating all along. But we also said that we should avoid to fall into the trap of those terrorists, those responsible for the attacks on October the seventh, that would like to turn the Middle East into an area of clash of civilizations, religions, and cultures. We will not allow that. While stating our full solidarity with Israel, we will continue to be engaged, as Italy, in our active intents diplomacy aimed at building bridges with the moderate Arab states, with our friends and partners, including the P.A., in the attempt to build a peaceful environment in the region based on mutual respect and mutual recognition. Italy abstained in the draft resolution that was adopted today. By recognizing the efforts on the part of our Arab partners who put the resolutions forward, the improvements that they have accepted, including the text, have been unfortunately not enough for us to support the draft. Three important elements were missing. First, the unequivocal condemnation in the strongest terms and without any ambiguity of the heinous attacks by Hamas of October seventh against innocent Israeli civilians. Second, it was missing the recognition of the legitimate right of self-defense of any state, of Israel in this case, under attack. Exercise of the right of self-defense should obviously be fully compliant with international law and the international humanitarian law. And finally, the resolution did not mention in explicit, unambiguous terms the humanitarian imperative to release immediately and unconditionally all the hostages taken on October the seventh and to treat them humanely. So we could not support the resolution because of these three elements missing. While the conflict is ongoing, our priority is to display all the possible diplomatic efforts to allow the safe and unimpeded passage of aid while firmly demanding the immediate and conditional release of all hostages. We need also to intensify our common efforts to avoid the conflict to spill over beyond Gaza. The consequence of an expansion of the conflict would be unimaginable for the region and for the entire world. The only way to avoid such dangerous prospect is to promote the resumption of a political initiative for a concrete, structural, long-term solution with the precisely defined timeline based on two people's, two states' perspective. The Palestinian people must have the right to be a self-governing nation in freedom alongside a state of Israel to which the full right to existence and security must be unequivocally unambiguously recognized. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Portugal.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the situation is raging and risks spiraling throughout the region, we are deeply disappointed that the use of veto has so far hindered the Security Council from addressing the situation in Israel and Gaza, and we welcome the General Assembly resolutions adopted today. Once again, Portugal would like to reiterate its unequivocal condemnation of the terrorist attacks by Hamas, reaffirm its solidarity with Israel, and the recognitions of Israel's right of self-defense. Terrorism in all its forms should be condemned, and hostages must be released immediately and without preconditions. No matter the savagery of the worst terrorist attacks on its history, Israel's action must respect international humanitarian law. No party to an armed conflict is above international humanitarian law. Tragically, civilian population, hospitals, U.N. facilities, including schools and other critical and civilian infrastructures are not being protected. The death toll on both sides is staggering. We cannot remain indifferent to the suffering of innocent victims, Israelis, Palestinians, and other nationalities, including U.N. workers. At this moment, our collective priority should be the protection of civilians and addressing the tragic humanitarian situation on the ground. Portugal fully supports the Secretary-General's call for humanitarian ceasefire and commands its tireless advocacy for humanitarian corridors so that aid can reach the population of Gaza. We commend the U.N. work on the ground and pay our respect to those who died in the service of Hundra. Mr. President, we also consider it is crucial to avoid the spread of the conflict to the West Bank and beyond by accident or calculated action. We welcome and encourage the continuation of regional and international efforts, both in multilateral and bilateral spheres, to prevent a spill over. And we must return to the diplomatic track to break the cycle of violence and extremism. We must transform this moment in crisis into a moment of peace in the future, both for Israelis and Palestinians, and do our utmost to preventing that anger and confrontation prevails. It is our collective responsibility to address the structural drivers of this conflict. This will require a renewed involvement of all relevant actors and a determined effort to implement the Security Council resolutions on the matter and set a clear and solid path to a Palestinian state fulfilling the two-state solutions. Mr. President, despite the efforts made by the co-sponsors, which we recognize, the General Assembly resolution adopted fails to condemn the appalling terrorist attack of October seven by Hamas and the taking of hostages. We deeply regret this. Acts of terrorism are criminal and unjustifiable regardless of their motivations, whenever and by whomever they are committed. Ostage-taking constitutes a serious violation of the Geneva Convention and a war crime under international law, criminal law. This is the reason why we voted in favor of the Canadian amendment and regret that it was not approved. Mr. President, in the aftermath of Hamas horrific attack, we shared the grief of Israeli families, and we declared our solidarity with Israeli people. The same humanity and belief in the inherent value of every human life takes us also to support the Palestinian people, acknowledging their suffering and the catastrophic reality in Gaza. This human tragedy unfolding before our eyes must be stopped now. No matter what, a humanitarian truth must be established immediately, and all parts must comply by their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law and human rights law. This is the reason why Portugal voted in favor of the resolution, because our common humanity must prevail. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Portugal. We have heard the last speaker in explanations of vote after the vote. I give the floor to the distinguished observer of the observer state of Palestine.
Mr. President, State of Palestine... Mr. President, distinguished delegates, today, here in the General Assembly, in the World's Parliament, countries of principle and conscience, peace-loving nations stood up and proved that the international community has not forsaken humanity, has not forfeited international law as the universal rules they apply to all, has not forsaken the promise, the purposes and principles of the United Nations, and has not abandoned the Palestinian people in these darkest hours, nor forsaken their just cause for freedom and justice. We are grateful to all the countries that voted in support of the draft resolution tabled by Jordan and co-sponsored by forty-six countries, expressing by an overwhelming majority support for this unequivocal call for an immediate humanitarian truce, for a halt to all attacks on civilians, for the protection of civilians, for compliance with international law, including humanitarian and human rights law, including the release of all civilians held captive, and has called for immediate and unimpeded humanitarian assistance that is so desperately needed by our people in the Gaza Strip, where Israel not only continues its aggression but is escalating its indiscriminate and savage attacks Palestinian children, women, men, as we speak. men, as we speak. The occupying power has launched its ground invasion in the darkest of Gaza, where it has cut electricity, internet, and all communications. And yet, here, there are still some who refuse to equally and unequivocally condemn these war crimes and crimes against humanity being perpetrated by Israel. But today, we will not focus on such a regrettable stance. We will focus on the unequivocal message this August Assembly has sent to our people that the overwhelming majority of the people of the world stand with you, stand with the people in the Gaza Strip. They bear witness to your suffering, they feel your pain, and they have not forgotten you and will not forsake you. So we express our sincere appreciation to our sisters and brothers in the Arab group under the leadership of Jordan, our sisters and brothers in the OIC under the leadership of Mauritania, for their unwavering solidarity and efforts to ensure the adoption of this important and principled resolution, of this vital resolution as the Security Council regrettably remains deadlocked, failing to uphold its charter duty to maintain international peace and security. And we thank all our sisters and brothers, yes, sisters and brothers from every region of the world for their principled support in favor on protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations. That is the true aim of this resolution. We are one in seeking an end to the killing, the trauma, and terror, the destruction. This, of course, is not something that the representative of the occupying power will ever understand. He still comes here to this world body after it has clearly spoken and said enough bullying and inciting, trying to force everyone to accept their twisted, criminal definition of the self-defense, i.e. to massacre civilians and destroy a people. There is no such right in this world, not legally, not politically, not morally. There will never be. This is the message that was sent today by the General Assembly to him and anyone else who is attempting to rewrite international law, including the laws meant to protect civilians, including those occupied and oppressed, blockaded and besieged and persecuted for so long. This is the reality of the Palestinian people. This is the reality that we appeal to you to not lose sight of and to act now to give meaning to the resolution adopted today with immediate practical efforts to secure a humanitarian truce that will lead to a cessation of hostilities and that will secure to our suffering people in Gaza the humanitarian aid.